Now call the August 10, 2020 meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission for the town of Prescott Valley to order. Would you please stand for the invocation of Pledge Allegiance? This evening our invocation will be led by Chaplain Gary Walker followed by the pledge by Commissioner John Yader.
Heavenly Father, we give you all the praise and all the honor and glory, Lord, that you would come here tonight. Bless this meeting, Lord, and all those that are involved. And, Lord, we just ask you to be here and bring that wisdom and discernment in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and your lawful citizens, one nation, under God, in the God of justice, law, and
Gary.
Thank you. Item number four on our agenda is our roll call. Vicki?
Commissioner Rutherford. Commissioner Musara.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Yader.
Yes.
Commissioner Laney.
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rankin.
Here.
And Chairperson Zurcher.
Here.
Item number five is approval of the minutes from the July 13, 2020 meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Item number six is announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Commission, we have two new planners onboard now and we have one old shoe as well in the form of Joe Scott. He's elected to stick around for a while and we're very blessed to have him. But Ed Packard and Eric Zurcher will be, not Zurcher, excuse me, Fitz, Fitzser, Zurcher. Fitzser will be presenting, Ed will be presenting tonight and Eric will be presenting next week. So would you both stand and say hello? Eric, so, excuse me, Ed's over here, Eric's in the back.
Welcome. All right, so item number seven on the agenda is public hearing items. We have one this evening. We will also be hearing at the same time, item number eight, action items preliminary development plan 20-002. But the public hearing item is zoning map change 20-003, and I'll read both into the record. Zoning map change 20-003 upon the application of Alex McMillan, owner of Whistlestop LLC, a request for a zoning map change from RSPAD residential and services with PAD overlay to C2PAD commercial general sales and services with PAD overlay in order to develop a 23-acre recreational vehicle resort with 251 RV spaces and associated amenities. Property is located east of Highway 69 and approximately 300 feet north of Kachina Way. Preliminary development plan 20-002 upon the application of Alex McMillan, owner of Whistlestop LLC, a request for preliminary development plan for 251 space recreational vehicle resort on approximately 23 acres located east of Highway 69 approximately 300 feet north of Kachina Place. Before you come up and present, let me just real quick, I forgot to read my opening statement here on our announcements, but welcome again. And my name's Matt Zurcher, I'm the Chairperson of Planning and Zoning Commission. I'll be presenting over this evening's deliberations. Planning and Zoning Commission sits in an advisory capacity to counsel and reviews planning and zoning issues and forwards recommendations regarding these important issues to counsel. Commission is bound by specific regulations and guidelines for considering applications, and there are also a surprising number of things the Commission cannot take into consideration when reviewing an application. Finally, members of the Commission are volunteers and not paid employees. We donate our time for the betterment of the town. This evening's proceedings will be conducted using the following format. First, I'll read the hearing application to the record. Once the application has been read to the record, staff will present the case and the recommendations to the Commission. Members of the Planning and Zoning Commission will then direct any questions they have regarding the application to staff. After the Commission completes its initial review of the application, the applicant will have an opportunity to comment regarding the matter and answer any questions. After the applicant has completed their comments, I'll open the floor to general comments from the public regarding the current application being discussed. With that, we'll proceed.
Thank you, Chairperson, members of the Commission. My name is Ed Packard, once again, a new planner in town. And so, we'll present this case. This is, as you mentioned, a zoning map, application for zoning map change and preliminary development plan approval for about a 22 and 1/2 acre site, proposed RV, RV resort, RV park, proposed 251 RV lots. The area is what you see on the city map and aerial photo up on the screen. It's about 300 feet north of Kachina Place off of State Route 69.
Excuse me, can you speak into the microphone?
Yeah, sorry. It's got the...
A little bit better, thank you.
Okay. The RVs...
You're too tall.
I know. Raise this up to bend over. That's okay. The only real adjacent business is the Lucky's BBQ and the self-storage space to the south there. I believe it's all pretty well spelled out in the staff report. I will just go over some of the, more of the open-ended issues that might need some explanation, but there is a, the access is off of State Route 69. The main, let me go over the existing zoning, is RSPAD and the requesting change to C2PAD. The previous development was approved in about 2005, 2006, was known as the Commons, and this area was a part of the Commons and that, and it was slated for multifamily development. The main access will be off of State Route 69. There, the turning movements into the property will be, there will be no left-turning movements out of the property onto State Route 69 or left-turn movements into the property from southbound State Route 69. Originally, the application did come in without that access off of Kachina Place. However, we didn't want people making, going down southbound on State Route 69, trying to make U-turns at the light there to go back north and then access the site. So the property owner and applicant did go back and negotiate an access easement from Kachina Place to the property that you see there on the south boundary of the site. With that, with those improvements, they will have to make improvements to the intersection at Kachina Place. There will be some widening, some additional lanes, and some relocating of the traffic signals there. But the main entrance will remain on State Route 69. There is the wash that's located on the north side of the site. It's 100-foot easement. It kind of, it's, the easement is located on this property and also on the property to the north. The wash has not been maintained very well. It's an ADOT easement, but there is erosion into the property on this site, and the property owner has actually already done some preliminary drainage design on that wash to convey the water out to the Agua Fria River in a manner that will not erode the site anymore. North Village Way is on the east side. The applicant will dedicate the right-of-way for North Village Way 80 feet and will be responsible for the development of that roadway. We're not sure on the timing of that development yet. A lot of that depends on adjacent development and when it happens, but that will eventually be developed. With that, there were some changes, some revisions to the stipulations that I believe were handed to you. There are three stipulations. Stipulation 2 has A through G. The revisions that were made were the stipulation D where we added, the last part of it will read, "North Village Way will match the alignment to, with a neighboring property to the north." That is because Doran Homes has, you may remember, has an approved preliminary development plan and an approved final development plan for multifamily housing on the north side of this site, and they have North Village Way coming in at a slightly different location. Those may, that may change in the future. We will see with, the applicant is negotiating and communicating with adjacent property owners to change that location likely to the east side of the lift station instead of the west side of the lift station where it's currently coming in. And then we have a change to stipulation E stating that where adjacent to the site and the roadway, developer shall be responsible for the construction of North Village Way. Where adjacent to the site and the roadway shall be in coformance with state and local floodplain administration rules. That was just some fine-tuning of the language to be more, to clarify and to be more precise because the applicant will be making some development, North Village Way will be, will cross that wash, some of the wash will, or some of that roadway will be modified to bring it out of the floodplain, I understand, and so, but just understand that it will be, the final design of the roadway will not be in the floodplain. And then there was one clarification that needs to be made on stipulation 3 where it refers to, in the written stipulations, it refers to an apartment complex. It needs to be changed to an RV park. And that is just some standard language referring to the town's 2% surcharge on rents charged at the, at the location of this. Staff does recommend the approval of ZMC 20-003 and PDP 20-002 with the recommended stipulations. I'm here to answer any questions, and the applicant is also here to answer any questions.
Thank you. This time, are there any questions of staff from the Commission? I do have one question, Ed. Do we know how far of a buffer zone there is to the north to the Doran Development?
Well, there is the, what's nine, well, there's a 100-foot easement there that is partially on this property, and then there's a piece of separate property. It's on...
I think I did see that, I just wanted to...
I'm not exactly sure how wide that property is to the north, and then the Doran piece is on the north side of that.
But easily, probably maybe 200, 300 feet potentially?
About that, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
And I'm not, Doran is in the process of making some revisions to their development, so the distance between their, the lots, the actual buildings and the location of that wash is kind of in limbo right now.
Okay. Thank you. This time, we'll invite the applicant up. Would you please state your name for the record?
Good evening. My name is Kevin McDougall. I'm the engineer on the project, and it's taken a lot of people working together hand-in-hand to get the project where it is today. To answer your, first of all, thank you for hearing the case, Mr. Chairman and Chair Commissioners. The question you had regarding the distance, I'm going to say that it's probably closer to 100 and 150 feet between. It varies...
Come a little closer to the mic.
It varies, the distance varies because it's at a, it's at an angle.
Okay.
To the adjacent property, to the Doran property, and there's a high slip, the high-slip properties between the two properties. The applicant has been working in hand-in-hand with the neighbors to work out agreements and also to, as Ed mentioned, Mr. Packard mentioned, to get the access easement to the south from ADOT. We've also been working with ADOT on the drainage issues. Now, it does have, it has, it takes water off of, there's a 12-inch water main in State Route 69, that's where we're accessing our water. There'll be fire main, fire connection and domestic service taking it off of that line. We're also putting in a future 12-inch, it's going to be an empty main temporarily in North Village, in North Village Way until such time as development meets us from the north and south. So we've addressed the future concerns for infrastructure. And drainage, we mentioned, we're surrounded by Agua Fria on the east, we've got the wash on the north, and so everything, all of our drainage goes directly to the Agua Fria River. I, I don't have anything to add right now, but I can come back if you, if the Commissioners have any further questions after discussion, after the public session. If there's any questions, I can return.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Right now, do any Commissioners have any questions of the applicant?
I have a couple of questions on the layout of all the sites. In the future, do you plan on maybe changing any of these to have some pullout sites? For pull-through, I should say?
No, what you see is what is planned for it currently. There's two variations on the sizes. There's, I'm going to just call them the more narrow ones, and then there's the more rectangle, the more, ones are a little bit more square, but there are not pull-throughs currently planned on this one, no.
And then, do you plan on having any landscaping between any of the sites?
Yes, landscaping will be in conformance with both town and state regs for low-water usage, and there's amenity packages too that the owners are planning for that type of thing. But yeah, we are, there's a landscaping that does go in conformance with the approvals.
And that would be between, between the individual sites as well?
As regulated by the code, I don't have the code memorized, but the code says there's like a number of plants for so many square feet, and it's going to be like, maybe there's one tree for every two units or something like that.
Okay, it will be something. Okay, thank you.
Go for it.
I just have one question. With what you were just talking about, lots 1 through 22 which are on the west side, it looks like those are set up as drive-throughs.
Those are, I apologize, those are pull-throughs. I forgot about those ones over there. And they are large pull-throughs, they're like 110 feet long. And that's because they're adjacent to the power poles.
That's just what I wanted to verify. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. Being the new kid on the block, I have probably a dumb question, but it's my understanding that when you get a subdivision before us, you have water credits from the state, and you're saying you're going to hook up to this water system of the town. How can you do that? Don't you have water credits or something?
I'm not sure, I don't know anything about water credits, but the town is the service provider for the water, so whatever the town has in place for fees and that type of thing will be paid by the developer. And I think the town is responsible for the water system and the water company, so that would be, that might be a question for the water company.
Actually, we'll have Richard.
Originally...
Richard answer the question better for you.
Okay, Richard.
Yeah, more of us, question suited for him, real quick.
Originally, you had water allocated for 70 apartments on that property. Is that correct?
Correct. Apartments do not require a certificate of assured water supply like a subdivision would. Likewise, this is not a subdivision, so there's not a CAWS necessary. The town utilizes water from the margin between that, that's actually used by the citizens per person, about 80 gallons per person per day, and that that's allocated in currently the third management plan, which is a product of Arizona Department of Water Resources. If this were to have been a subdivision, then yes, there would be a requirement for them because it's a post-declaration development to provide water credits or some other alternate source. But inasmuch as it's a commercial project, there's not a requirement for a CAWS.
Okay, but now you're, so my concern is we've got originally 70 apartments that were going to use X number amount of water. Now we have 251 units that are going to use the same amount of water?
Marginally the same, but the point being is the town treats this as a commercial use. We have water allocated for commercial uses without obligating the developer to go to the Department of Water Resources and get a CAWS. This is not a subdivision, so there's not a law requiring that.
Okay. Thank you.
One more question for you, sir. Picking back off of Commissioner Monsieur, I think he was kind of getting on this, you know, asking about maybe a landscape screen between basically the northern property and then the RV park.
There is, I'm going to say, it varies by, the width varies. I'm not sure what the landscape architect is going to come up with, but it will be in conformance with code as far as whatever the town requires.
It's in the pack, but I just wanted to ask the question.
But I'm sure there'll be something in there, but it's, it's beyond my scope as civil engineer, but we do have a professional onboard that's prepared after the zoning cases. This will all be put before the approval process.
Okay.
I do have one more question. You had indicated the 1,800 square feet allows room for an RV or small dwelling unit. What do you mean by a small dwelling unit?
It could be a park model.
And that would be permanent, then?
That could be. It's wheeled, it's a, it's a, it's a classification, it's a RV classification, but I believe it's 400 square feet or less.
Yeah, yeah, mm-hmm, okay. I figured that's what you were talking about, but, so there will be permanent units there?
There could be. Yes, potentially.
Any other questions of the, again, from the Commission? All right, thank you. We'll call you up if there are any other questions. This time, we'll open up the public hearing for zoning map change 20-003 and preliminary development plan 20-002. Is there anyone wishing to address the Commission?
I just have a question. Is this a senior development or is it children or?
Definitely have that answered for you, Gary. Hold, give it just a second, we'll see if any other questions...
In other words, if you're bringing in RVs, is it just for adults?
Okay, definitely, we'll get that question answered for you. Anybody else wishing to address the Commission with regard to this? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and I'll invite the applicant back up so he can address the question that was asked.
To answer that question, there are no age restrictions on this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just like that.
All right, we'll bring it back to the Commission. Any other questions of the Commission of either the staff or applicant?
Me.
All right. At this time, is there a motion to approve zoning map change 20-003 with the conditions that have been stated below? Those are items number one, and then two, items 2A through 2G, and then item number three.
Chairman, I move that we approve ZMC 20-003 with the stipulation, with one correction, number three on the back where it identifies any phase of the apartment, that should be changed to RVs.
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Musara?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Yader?
Yes.
Commissioner Laney?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Yes.
And Chairperson Zurcher?
Yes. This time, we need to do a motion for the preliminary development plan, so is there a motion to approve preliminary development plan 20-002?
So move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Musara?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Yader?
Yes.
Commissioner Laney?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Yes.
And Chairperson Zurcher?
Yes. Item number two under action items is RP-20-004 upon the application of Robert Hamel. A request for the plat of dedication and abandonment to reconfigure the town right-of-way at the southeast intersection of Viewpoint Drive and Pronghorn Ranch Parkway. Joe?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. The property shown here was part of zoning map change, ZMC 0506, that comprised approximately 53 acres located at the northwest corner of Viewpoint Drive and State Route 89A, south of the Viewpoint subdivision. This approved preliminary development plan here indicates retail, commercial, and light industrial uses for what was called the North Gate Village Center. Res zoning with conditions was approved by ordinance number 639 in October of 2005. The only development that has occurred since that time is the, in this project, is a Mormon temple, and that was a final development plan that slightly redesigned or altered this original plan. Robert Hamel, you know, with Robert's Market, has since acquired various properties at the northeast and southeast corners of Viewpoint Drive and Pronghorn Ranch Parkway. Showing the exhibit here, some of this property has been excess town right-of-way resulting from the realignment of Viewpoint Drive. The north side parcel totals approximately .71 acres and the south side parcels, 5.6 acres. At the August 12, 2019 meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved and amended preliminary development plan, shown here, for the two land parcels, again, the .71 acres of the northwest corner and the 5.6 acres of the southwest corner of Viewpoint Drive. And that plan comprised approximately 10,000 square foot of office space, 18,000 square foot of retail, 6,000 square feet for a convenience store and a car wash. The property is zone C2PAD for the commercial general sales and services. The applicant now wishes to develop the 5.6 acres as a final development plan to be consistent with approved preliminary development plan. The north side property may be 10 years out. The plan maintains the similar access drives being approximately 200 feet from Viewpoint Drive intersection as was originally approved. Offsite improvements to roadways are required per town code. Development of the southwest corner requires roadway improvements for half width of Pronghorn Ranch Parkway and Viewpoint Drive. To accommodate the offsite improvements of curb, sidewalk, and pavement, the widening for the right turn lane for Pronghorn Ranch Parkway and also Viewpoint Drive's southbound lane will require strip of extra property approximately 20 feet wide along Pronghorn Ranch Parkway and property along Viewpoint Drive. So the, so this RP 20-004 then defines the areas that will be exchanged between the owner and the town to create the necessary public utility easements and additional right-of-way. The, and the plat indicates the reasons for that. The final plat of dedication and abandonment can be approved in conjunction with an approved final development plan on the 5.6 acres. The plat has been reviewed by Public Works, the town engineer, as consistent with the C2PAD zoning district, and staff recommends Commission make a motion to approve RP 20-04 subject to the included conditions. Without, I'm going to run any questions, I don't think any representative of the applicant is here.
Any questions of staff? Go for it.
Is it common or common practice to approve something that may be developed 10 years in the future?
We're not, that's the north property, I can point that out to you. You can't see it, but that's the piece on the north side of Pronghorn Ranch Parkway, the smaller piece. So the Commission previously approved both those preliminary development plans, so right now, just the larger 5.6 acres on the south side is the only piece intended to be developed in the near future. So, right, the preliminary development plan covers both pieces, but the only immediate plans are to develop the larger piece on the south side. And so this just impacts the roadways adjacent to that property on Pronghorn Ranch Parkway and Viewpoint Drive, and that's the road maze segments that will be improved. So again, this just illustrated roughly what the lanes, additional lanes need to look like and showing that they impact where the property lines are, and that's why those adjustments are being made.
Any other questions of staff of the Commission?
I don't have any.
Okay. Thank you, Joe. At this point in time, we'll entertain a motion for RP 20-004 with the conditions in our packet.
I'd like to make a motion to approve RP 20-004 with the conditions listed.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Musara?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Yader?
Yes.
Commissioner Laney?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Yes.
And Chairperson Zurcher?
Yes. Item number nine, call to the public. Consideration and discussion of comments from the public. Those wishing to address the Planning and Zoning Commission need not request permission in advance. Action taken... Action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date. Do we have anyone wishing to address the commission? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number 10, adjournment of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'd make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We stand adjourned.